I will now call this special meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on March 19th, 2024. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Vogelzang.
Here.
Quinn.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to amend tonight's agenda to include a proclamation for Save Soil Day. So could I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich. Could I get a second? Seconded by Quinn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The amended agenda is approved. And, good segue, I will now read the proclamation for the Save Soil Movement. Whereas, Save Soil is a global movement launched by Sadhguru, uniting world leaders, visionaries, influencers, and citizens of all nations behind a common purpose: to restore and safeguard the world's soil. And whereas, Save Soil aims to address the global soil crisis, recognizing that 52% of the world's agricultural soils are already degraded, and by 2050, 90% of the earth's soil could be degraded. And whereas, addressing soil degradation issues would bring solutions for the loss of biodiversity, nutritional deficiencies, food security, water scarcity, climate change, and mass migration. And whereas, the proposed solution is always to advocate for policies across all nations towards soil restoration, and to aim to increase organic matter in agricultural soil to a minimum of 3% to 6%. And whereas, in an effort to raise awareness and activate support from leaders and citizens alike, Sadhguru was on a 30,000-kilometer journey as a lone motorcyclist covering 27 nations over 100 days since March 21st, 2022. And now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, do hereby proclaim March 21st, 2024, as Save Soil Day in Coralville. As soil is vital to all life, and we urge citizens to be a part of the Save Soil Movement to support national policies towards soil restoration and aim to raise the organic matter of soil to a minimum of 3% to 6%. Be it further proclaimed that I urge all citizens to participate in creating bright futures for our children and for the future of the planet. Signed on this 19th day of March, 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. And we have someone here to receive the proclamation. Right, did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, yeah, hop up to the mic and...
...the summary of why we need to save the soil. I am bio-organic chemist, but I don't like to use all those scientific terms. So, yeah, it's very important all the time. We say that of carbon dioxide emission, a lack of water, all those things, fuel, but we don't think about the soil. That is a very thin layer on the earth's surface, and that basically is giving the food to us. So, and the microbiome also, the different type of microbes present in the soil that basically are controlling our earth, so their diversity is also changing rapidly due to the loss of the soil properties, because the organic matters are gone, sometimes minerals are gone. So it is very necessary, and mainly in Iowa and Midwest, so it is very necessary because we are here. Cultivation is the main pillar of the economy, so here, if we cannot save the soil, then we can get a problem after a few years. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much, really appreciate you being here tonight. Would you like a photo?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal. Okay, next item, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. And I don't see anyone here this evening, so we will move on to the next item. Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. So we have a few parts to this agenda item. The first is a public hearing on the environmental information document, and this is a requirement to receive state revolving funds for this project. So I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any written comments?
No written, but Mr. Larson needs to read the...
Okay.
...to the minutes.
Yes, so I'll close the public hearing and then go for it.
What I'm going to read is the summary of these renovation documents for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. The purpose of this project is to make improvements to the city's wastewater infrastructure to enhance their reliability, increase capacity, and to replace obsolete systems to safely and reliably operate the city of Coralville's wastewater system for the next 20 years. The proposed project includes construction of approximately 8,500 millimeter feet of 12-inch sanitary sewer force main along the Oakdale Boulevard from Brown Deer Lift Station to Oakdale Road, then south across the Crandic Railroad to the existing sewer west of Lynncrest Drive. Proposed construction methods include open-cut construction, directional bored force main, air release structure, clearing, seeding, and surface restoration. A description of the alternative options considered is available upon request. A summary of the impact of the improvements on the sewer use charges is available upon request. Federal, state, and local agencies were asked to comment on the proposed project to better assess the potential impact to the environment. A list of the agencies contacted is available. To date, no adverse comments were received from any agencies or the general public. Summary of reasons for concluding, no significant impact. The project will not significantly affect the pattern and type of land use, industrial, commercial, agricultural, recreational, residential, or growth and distribution of population. The project will not conflict with local, regional, or state land use plans or policies. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has determined the proposed project will not impact wetlands or jurisdictional waters of the United States. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has been provided Section 7 documentation that the project will not affect threatened and endangered species or their habitats provided that any tree cutting is conducted between August 1st to October 11th in order to minimize potential impacts to the rusty patch bumblebee. If any state or federally listed threatened or endangered species or communities are found during the planning or construction phases, additional studies and/or mitigation may be required. The project will not displace population, alter the character of existing residential areas, or convert significant farmlands to non-agricultural purposes. The project will not affect the 100-year floodplain provided all necessary floodplain development permits, state and local, are obtained and the terms of which are abided by. The project will not have effect on parklands, preserves, other public lands, or areas of recognized scenic or recreational value. No historic properties will be adversely affected by the proposed project. However, if project activities uncover any items that might be of archaeological, historical, or architectural interest, or if new, important new archaeological, historical, or architectural data should be encountered in the project APE, the applicant should make reasonable efforts to avoid further impacts to the property until an assessment can be made by an individual meeting the Secretary of the Interior's professional qualifications standards, 36 CFR Part 61. The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient air quality provided the applicant takes reasonable precautions to prevent the discharge of visible emissions of fugitive dusts beyond the lot line of the property during the proposed project, 567 of the Iowa Administrative Code, 23.32C. The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient noise levels, surface water quantity, groundwater quality or quantity, or water supply. No significant impact to surface water quality, fish, shellfish, wildlife, or their natural habitats is expected provided that an MPDES General Permit Number Two for Stormwater Discharge associated with construction activities is obtained in the terms of which are abided by.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, thank you very much, thank you for reading that into the record, okay. Now, I would entertain a motion to receive and approve and place on file the environmental information document for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project.
So moved.
Moved by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, on to the next item. We have some items that are connected to the construction of a new force main from Brown Deer Number Four Lift Station along Oakdale Road and Oakdale Boulevard. So I will open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of bids, and directing posting of the bid letting all for the Oakdale Boulevard Force Main Project. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion?
What was the estimated cost?
I believe it's, right now it's at three, three million?
Three million, okay. I didn't see that in here.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Vogelzang. Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
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 Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, West Land Use Trunk Sewer Phase Two. So Phase Two will extend the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer System to the north and east of where Phase One ends. So we will start this with a bid report from Scott Larson.
On March 5th, we received seven bids on this project, and the low bid was received from Maxwell Construction of Iowa City. Their base bid was $3,084,281.50, and their alternate bid, which is a change of pipe material, was a deduct of $85,230. The engineer's estimate on the base bid was 4.2 million, so obviously the bids, most of the bids actually came in under the engineer's estimate. And after reviewing the, all the numbers, we do recommend awarding the project to Maxwell Construction, and this is pending IDNR concurrence on the award, and that amount would be $2,999,051.50, so that's the base bid, plus the bid alternate, which is a deduct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, could I have the first resolution, please?
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract for the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase Two pending notice of funding eligibility from INDR. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, and seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or discussion?
Any clue, Scott, why the alternate bids sometimes went up and sometimes went down? It seems like the material cost would go in one direction or the other.
Yeah, that's a hard one to say. I don't know if it's because they use different suppliers, or they're more familiar with one pipe product versus the other, but yeah, it seemed to be split kind of even as far as deducts versus adds for that particular change.
I assume we were anticipating a deduction.
I think so. I will say that on the other project, the Phase One project, we actually kind of went the other way with the pipe material, because it was less on the other one. But both pipe materials are completely satisfactory to us either way, so we were happy for the deduct.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. On to the second resolution.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the West Land Use Phase Two. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Aye, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Kemp Lift Station Abandonment. The sanitary sewer lines served by the Kemp Lift Station will be connected to a new gravitational sewer line so that the lift station can be abandoned. And we will start with another bid report from Engineer Scott Larson.
So also on March 5th, we received bids for the Kemp Lift Station abandonment, and we received five bids. The low bidder was Maxwell Construction Incorporated from Iowa City with a bid of $242,096. The engineer's estimate was $270,500. So the low bid was slightly under the estimate. I recommend we do award this project to Maxwell Construction in the amount of $242,096.
Thank you. Okay, could I have the resolution?
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract for the Kemp Lift Station abandonment. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Aye, Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And now the next resolution, please.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Kemp Lift Station Abandonment. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Aye, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Clear Creek Trail Connection Project. This project built the Clear Creek Trail Connection along the east side of Camp Cardinal Boulevard from the Tom Harkin Trailhead to Highway Six. All right, so I will start out by entertaining a motion approving the final pay estimate from Midwest Concrete for this project.
So moved.
Moved by Quinn, second, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the Clear Creek Trail Connection Project as completed. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions on this item?
Not a question, just a congratulation. That turned out to be a very nice project. Thank you.
I second that.
Good. All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Lot One Ridge View Edition. This resolution accepts the public improvements for Lot One Ridge View Edition. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting public improvements constructed on Lot One Ridge View Edition, Coralville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Does this mean they're getting close to having people move in?
No, I don't think they've even started, I don't think they've started putting foundations in out there yet.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Finance Director Signatory. This is a bank requirement to give our new Finance Director, Ann Hester, access to the city's bank accounts in order to perform her duties. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving Finance Director Ann Hester as signatory on all of the city of Coralville bank accounts. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, bonds. We have several steps for this agenda item. The first is a resolution that would fix the date of a public hearing for the financing for the Fifth Street improvements from 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue, and refinancing several older bonds. And the public hearing for this will be on April 9th, 2024. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution to fix the date for a public hearing on general obligation essential corporate purpose loan agreements. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by...
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Resolution approving an underwriting engagement letter and disclosure. This is for DA Davidson and Company underwriting services and required disclosures for Coralville's proposed offerings and issuance of bonds in 2024. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an underwriting engagement letter and disclosures from DA Davidson and Company. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Aye, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions on this item?
Same company as prior?
Yes.
Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, our last resolution. This would terminate the, or amend, I'm sorry, this would amend our financial services agreement with Piper Sandler, and these amendments would terminate the private placement engagement letter with Piper Sandler dated November 28th, 2023, and it would amend the financial services agreement dated January 10th, 2012, to include general obligation and refunding bond series 2024 A, B, C, and D. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an amendment to financial services agreement with Piper Sandler Co. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions on this item or comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
All right, resolution is approved, all ayes. Final item, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
But I, Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider motion to approve the consent calendar as amended with item Z removed.
Moved by Quinn, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution, or I'm sorry, the consent calendar is approved as amended, all ayes. Okay, next item, City Administrators' Report.
First, I would like to acknowledge having Don Deal back stronger than ever. It's great to have you here, Don.
Thank you.
And just, we had earlier mentioned the Clear Creek Trail. Just wanted to remind folks that it will be open this summer, but there will be a slight detour as our Clear Creek remediation, Clear Creek Stream Bank remediation project will be occurring, and to make everybody safe, there will be a slight detour, but it is still open, and I would encourage people to go out and use the trail on these nice days. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor's Report, I don't have anything this evening, but I thought it would be good to give the community an update on the single stream recycling program. Kelly, can you share a little bit of information about that?
Yeah, we're still working on that final date, but we will be implementing later this spring, early summer. We had the delay of the truck being constructed, and so that's what put us behind, and they have worked out a agreement with the company that one way or the other, we will be able to start sometime in the June timeframe. Everyone will be getting a can, a cart delivered to them directly to their home, and we'll be starting that program, so we look forward to that. Thank everybody for their patience, but we do have an end, and hopefully we'll be announcing the date soon.
And we're just add that the connection will be coming out this week, it's at the post office right now, and that's going to have a lot more information in it about single stream. It won't have that date in it, but it has a lot of information about the carts and how it's going to work and the rollout.
Excellent, thank you very much. You know, we have so many community members that are excited about that. I've actually been hearing from folks that like, hey, we're, you know, we're looking forward to getting our carts and being able to utilize that service, so I'm excited that things are on track. Okay, that's all I have this evening. City Attorney's Report.
Well, as Kelly mentioned, it's nice to be back. The one thing I will tell you all, that some of you were disturbed over the length of my spring bake, and I'll try and do better the next time. Kevin?
I've got nothing.
Fantastic, thank you, and welcome back, Don. It is wonderful to have you back this evening. Okay, Committee and Council Members' Report, let's start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
All right, thank you. I just want to congratulate all the basketball teams and wrestling and different activities that are going on during this March Madness, and look forward to, I'm sure, as we all do, watching lots of sports these next two weeks. The Fourth Fest Basket Auction is coming up, and if you would like to donate a basket, please do that. You can bring it here to City Hall or let them know that you have a basket or a gift item that you would like to donate these. The basket auction is April 20th on Saturday, and the money will go towards the Fourth of July Fourth Fest. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, well, I'd like to talk about this nice, beautiful first day of spring. So here we are in the springtime, and kind of going along with your resolution with the dirt project and the guy that rode his motorcycle across the world, that's pretty interesting. Just with being the first day of spring, I would ask people to be vigilant looking for motorcycles. So we got used to over the winters that there's not motorcycles on the road, and now they'll be coming out on the road pretty heavily, so just keep your eyes open. That's all I have.
Are you going to be out on a motorcycle?
I just so happen to...
Let's start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
All right. Thank you. I just want to congratulate all the basketball teams and wrestling and different activities that are going on during this March Madness, and look forward to, I'm sure, as we all do, watching lots of sports these next two weeks. The Fourth Fest Basket Auction is coming up, and if you would like to donate a basket, please do that. You can bring it here to City Hall, or let them know that you have a basket or a gift item that you would like to donate these. The basket auction is April 20th on Saturday, and the money will go towards the Fourth of July Fourth Fest. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, well, I'd like to talk about this nice, beautiful first day of spring. So here we are in the springtime. And kind of going along with your resolution with the dirt project and the guy that rode his motorcycle across the world, that's pretty interesting. Just with being the first day of spring, I would ask people to be vigilant looking for motorcycles. So we got used to over the winters that there's not motorcycles on the road, and now they'll be coming out on the road pretty heavily, so just keep your eyes open. That's all I have.
Are you going to be out on a motorcycle?
I just so happened to purchase a new one last week.
So be on the lookout for Royce and other motorcyclists as well. Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The community meal is coming up this week, this Friday, so I would like to invite everyone in the community to come out and eat with us. It is going to take place at the Corvo Public Library downstairs. And the meals start from 5:30 and go until 8 o'clock. We extended the serving hour of the meal to accommodate for folks who observe Ramadan, so that way they can break their fast with us for the half hour, because sundown is 7:21. So that's give them a little bit over a half an hour to enjoy the meal with us. There will be a space available for folks that need to pray, to break their fast. And so if you observe Ramadan and worry about that part, please come enjoy us. We, we do accommodate and make space for you. And it's going to be a really fun one. This one is unique in a way that we don't cook all the food. We invite community members to cook and share the food that is meaningful to them, or just simply that they like to eat and like to share with everybody. So so far, we have 15 different chefs that signed up for dishes, so there will be a lot of different types of food to try. It's open to everyone and free. Why eating? You can also enjoy music or entertainment produced by local talent. So it could be, you know, your next door neighbor friend, grandkids, or kids. And the Corvo Transit will also have a bus there with two staff members who are fluent in Spanish and French in order to push out more information about Corvo Transit, public transit, so that, you know, folk can learn more about what kind of services available when it comes to public transportation. And the bus will be there for the entire duration of the meal, from 5:30 to 8:00. In addition to that, there will also be vaccine available for free. So COVID-19 booster and vaccine, and then also flu vaccine if anyone have the need. So I would encourage you to come out, enjoy some local entertainment, local good food, and get some, you know, vaccine, and also check out our transit system as well. Summer Lunch is coming up. Summer Lunch Program is a program that used to operate by the, the rec center, sorry, I just lost my train of thoughts. And it's been going for a long, long time. And due to, you know, various reason, it's kind of dwindling out for a couple of years, but we revived it with partnership all around the county. And last year was the first year that we implemented the program. We were able to serve for eight weeks in the summer, and that allowed a space for kids who, you know, just, just needed a place to get a meal for lunch with their caretaker to be able to come and, and, you know, eat a good hearty meal. So we are doing that again this year, this summer. We will be able to extend that to 10 weeks. And in order to make that a successful program and sustain it, we are asking for support from businesses and organization that is located within our county, because we can't do it alone. We need your help and support in order to feed kids and community member. So please go to our website or reach out to me, and I can connect you to the right person to get that going. And last week, I was gone, you know, on a short break with my family, but I, I followed the, the local news, and it warmed my heart to see that there was, oh my gosh, I forgot the, the number, but it was a semi-truck load of potato that got saved from the dumps.